Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening. Actually, uh, we're going to call this special work session to order at this point in time. If we could ask for a roll call, please.
Roll call, Wakes.
Present.
Mulvaney Henry. Parker.
Yeah.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. For this agenda for the afternoon, I just want to see if there are any changes or any discussion regarding the agenda that's been presented. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Wait a second.
Okay, roll call, please, Ms. Lawson.
Roll call, Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. I'm going to turn the work session over to our general manager, Mr. Ash, Jeremy Ash, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Don't have very many comments tonight, but do want to introduce Mr. Sean Long and his team that is here representing their company that we have engaged to do, to do some business with at the Quandaro site. So as long as none of the board members have any comments they'd like to make, we turn it over to Sean and his team to, to give some introductions and go through the information that they have to share.
Very good. Welcome, sir.
Thank you so much, honorable members of the board. We appreciate this opportunity to speak to you and tell you a little bit about the project that we are expecting to redevelop at the Quandaro site, which you already know. But we appreciate this opportunity to introduce ourselves. My name is Sean Long. I'm the co-founder and CEO of Power Transitions. Power Transitions is a privately held company owned by a large private equity group called Encap Bestens. They've raised over forty-seven million dollars of capital across several funds. We're owned by their energy transition fund, which they manage currently. And Power Transition was established in twenty twenty-three, early twenty twenty-three, for the sole purpose of redeveloping what we call legacy industrial assets. I mean, sure, everybody might be getting to it, but I think we'll probably follow it online. Maybe we can add a little height here, so. Is this better?
Is that better? Sorry. Apologies for that. I'm a rookie. Um, and Power Transitions was established in early twenty twenty-three for the sole purpose of redeveloping what we call legacy assets, power or industrial assets into what we, we call the next best use. Um, and generally that could be renewable energy. Um, we're moving to redevelop into thermal, thermal energy solutions. Um, but in Quandaro case, um, which is very exciting, we look to redevelop into a brand new data center. And a part of what we do is we take on the environmental liability that really makes us, unlike many companies out there, will take on that environmental liability, will manage the remediation and deconstruction of the facility. Uh, and then so that we can get to the fun part, which is building something new. Um, my background is over thirty years in the energy business. Um, I've traveled all over the world, redeveloping or developing projects from China to Africa to Latin America. And, uh, and I'm excited to be focused back in the U.S. Uh, making improvements. And one of the, um, things that we're also very excited about, uh, what we do and our strategy is it, it also benefits the community. Um, and so, um, I don't want to steal Patrick's thunder, but, um, when we're, when we're able to redevelop sites, um, communities that have lost uh, or reduce the benefit from the private prior, uh, infrastructure, now we're building something new. And so that creates jobs that, uh, with, with, you know, new technology, it has skills transfers for a local community and then also helps restore tax bases. Um, and so, you know, we, we really like, uh, our strategy and what we do. And this project is our priority project for the company. We have several projects going on, but this is the one that, um, is number one for the company and we're focused on and very excited about. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't introduce my co-founder, Rob McConde. Rob and I have known each other for
two more years.
Yeah, we're both, we're not that young. So, so Rob and I have known each other for at least twenty-five years and uh, have remained friends over that. And Rob actually ran, um, a brownfield redevelopment business before Power Transitions. We actually call Power Transitions, uh, Power Transitions two point O, because it's really an extension of what Rob was doing uh, with redevelopment capital. Rob, why don't you introduce yourself?
Thank you, sir.
Hi, y'all. I'm Rob McConde. I'm a co-founder and chief redevelopment officer for Power Transitions. Um, and really it'd be, I'd be remiss if I didn't add a little bit of flavor to what Sean said, how this came together. Yes, it's, uh, Power Transitions is Redevelopment Capital Partners two point O, so to speak. RCP was my former company that, when we genesis a brownfield strategy and then, um, uh, back in two thousand and fifteen and here recently sold it in two thousand and twenty-four. Um, while we were ramping up, uh, Power Transitions. And it's interesting, Sean and I started an energy, uh, company back in the early two thousands. Uh, we, we went our separate ways. Um, Sean did a lot of international work and he had started a company called Endeavor Energy. And a very successful company and, but it was international, it was in Africa region, South Africa and Africa. And um, I started RCP. And for the longest time, we wanted to get back together and work. Sean was back in the States in the early twenty twenties and I found out via LinkedIn, believe it or not. And I like, I, I said, Sean, you're back in the States? He said, yeah. And I said, let's meet. We've got to get together. We've got to, we got to do something. And we met and, uh, and, uh, we formed what's called Power Transitions. But before that, really it's a combination of two strategies. He was doing the backend renewable, uh, energy development. I was doing the brownfield side and we just pushed the two strategies together. Um, and, and of course, the rest is history. NCAP decided to fund it. But it's very interesting of how that all came together. And I thought I'd share that with you because it's really content, it's, it's just, uh, who we are. And so we've, we've pushed the two strategies together. And in doing that, we've created a lot of valuable partnerships that otherwise might have been a little bit of competition. And so we, we, uh, we have a strong team. Um, not only that, um, they're all aligned. Sean spoke about, uh, the community benefit, which is near and dear to our heart. Uh, we, we, what we do there is we really, uh, go after stakeholders in the community. Um, and we, we talk with them one-on-one and we keep them updated to the point where they can go into community and keep their constituents up to date on what's going on in the project. RCP deployed this strategy and, and, uh, and type of involvement, and it's proven to be very successful. Uh, when we formed RCP, we started with, uh, um, scrapping like transformers. We, we graduated to milk farms and then we went to a cosmetic factory. And then after that, we, we got in a little bit bigger stuff with, uh, paper mills. Um, we, we did some coal facilities in our largest, uh, capstone project and RCP was a project called Dorville. Uh, it was a General Motors facility outside of Buckhead, Atlanta. And we purchased the whole thing from General Motors. Um, and we were the fourth entity that actually, um, went to the table to close. The other three were unsuccessful because they couldn't satisfy GM's lawyers on, um, ensuring, uh, the liability wouldn't come back to GM. We were successful in that and the way we did our strategy and our diligence and created policies and things. Uh, and we closed with GM. Uh, back then it would think was for sixty-five million. And, uh, that development, believe it or not, back in two thousand and fifteen, we started to this date, it's, uh, it's a small city outside of Buckhead and very well known. So we're pretty proud of that, uh, capstone in our feather, in, in our, uh, portfolio. So, um, me personally, thirty-plus years in the energy, I too have a lot of international energy experience in developing and constructing. And also a lot of, uh, U.S. energy experience, mainly on the fossil fuel, uh, transmission line side. Um, uh, and a few renewable projects as well. Uh, I dived into the fuel cells a little bit with, uh, International Fuel Cell Corp., uh, when I was at my former company. So, um, uh, other than that, um, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick Brosnan. I don't want to steal any more thunder from him. He's got a great presentation. But I can echo Sean's sentiments. We are very excited about this project because it demonstrates why we were set up as a company and all aspects of it. And it's going to be very fun to see it through to a very successful project. So we're super excited and thank you guys for allowing us to be here.
Hi, board. Pleasure to meet you all. Thank you for having us today. Um, I'm the one with the thud, the thunder, but I'm also the one that's a little bit of a nervous public speaker. So if you need me to repeat something, slow down. Just wave a flag, wave me down. I'm happy to do that. Uh, really looking forward to meeting you all. We've had the pleasure of working with the BPU since two thousand and twenty-three when they initially issued the RFP for the Quandaro site. It's been an incredibly constructive and productive engagement to get us this far. Um, I know you're up to speed on the option purchase agreement that we're going to be discussing a little bit today. This is a preview for what will present to the UG. So you might hear me say, as you already know, several times, but it's just the content of the slides is things that you already know for a large part. Just a little bit of my background. Uh, I joined Power Transitions inception in two thousand and twenty-four or two thousand and twenty-three, excuse me. I have ten years' experience doing energy transactions on the environmental side and environmental compliance. So sites like Quandar when they were up and running and also like you had next best uses throughout the United States. That's what I've done on the coal side, on the gas side. Yeah. No, sorry, Patrick Brosnan.
Bro.
Yeah, uh, like Pierce Brosnan, like Charles Bronson, I have to differentiate the movies. Um, yeah, absolutely. Um, so if it's okay, I can turn to the presentation. Right? Okay, we have to get a hand signal. Um, as I mentioned, we've been working with the BPU teams since two thousand and twenty-three to try to find the next best use for this site. Um, ultimately working together to find out what's going to relieve some of the near-term costs and long-term liability of maintaining the existing infrastructure. What could provide a revenue source for the BPU? What could provide a revenue source for the UG? And what can revitalize the economy, uh, economic area in that area with, uh, job creation? Um, the data center we propose right now, as you can see on the screen, that rendering is for a hundred ninety-two megawatt data center. Uh, that employs fifty people each building for long-term employment, as well as five hundred construction jobs, um, based on our latest estimates. And that's just the direct employment in addition to indirect employment that can arise out of that. Sean mentioned the skills transfer. Right now there's a shortage in IT workers. So a lot of these data center operators are investing in skill gap, uh, addressing the skill gap and training and apprenticeships to bring the skills to these sites that they have. I can go to the next slide. Um, this covers what Sean and Rob already covered about our strategy. Uh, effectively, we're, our team is composed of people who are environmental experts, we're meet, uh, brownfield redevelopment experts and energy infrastructure experts. We're financed by, uh, NCAP as, as Sean mentioned, being able to provide the capital to be able to move this across the finish line. That's incredibly important for some of these brownfield redevelopments where there tends to be a lot more upfront capital that needs to be spent to address some of the hurdles to unlock the value of a site. Which is what we see here. I think us and the BPU both see an extreme amount of value that could be unlocked once you get over the environmental op- obstacles here. Uh, the switching station is incredibly attractive. You just need to find a solution that where you can safely and competently manage the environmental liabilities that are onsite to then open that up, particularly for a site like this where our current estimates is the environmental costs are about nineteen million dollars to address. Whereas the site value based on the BPU appraisal is closer to ten million. So you need to be able to find something that can then take, absorb that other excess cost of the environmental remediation and seize the value of the onsite switch yard and working with a, a partner like BPU to be able to take that on as part of a bigger capital budget. Data centers are that. Data, our current estimates right now are about two billion dollars in total capital costs associated with building out the powered shell and building out the other, uh, compute power within the shell. So for a normal, you know, redevelopment opportunity, you know, logistics warehouse, something like an extra ten million dollars of capital cost just to deal with the environmental liability might be a hurdle that can't be overcome. But if you have the type of budgets that a data center requires to be able to spend, that's less significant as, 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 as the value to, well, it's to the value of being able to provide power to the site using the onsite switching. So it's really a unique solution to be able to take on these, these liabilities um, and finance in a project like a data center. So may I have any questions on that? Okay. And I talk faster as I go, so please. So, um, what's on the screen now is the map of the, the sixty-five acres we're looking to acquire. It actually extends beyond that. The highlighted area there is just some of the key areas for remediation demolition that BPU and Power Transitions will enter into to address before the option purchase is executed. Uh, that includes the water waste, uh, the water treatment area, plant two, plant three, and the former coal yard. Uh, our current plan right now is to be able to start all of that remediation demolition simultaneously, but be able to complete the area around the water treatment area. That air, that would allow us to be able to bring the first data center online in two thousand and twenty-seven. Um, the second area on plant three would be closer to two thousand and twenty-nine, which is based both, um, based both on the timing to be able to complete the work as well as to be able to coordinate with BPU on additional power availability for that site and transformers. Highlights, there's the data center campus that we're, uh, working with. We're working with a partner, Ramble EYIP, who's working with also many of the large data center partners that we have, uh, in connection with the project. Um, Kansas City, as you may be aware, is one of the top data center markets in the U.S. Um, Cushman and Wakefield named it number one. A lot of that's being done on the Missouri side. What we've talked to, when we're talking to those who are over on the Missouri side, say, they're looking for kind of a hub and spoke model where they might have a very large data center in one location, but they want to have smaller proximate data centers to that central location. So this, this size of data center would fit well within that model. That's who we're currently engaging with on those projects. Oh, we're good. Um, a- as Sean alluded to, we also do, uh, energy storage. And we think with the load grow out, uh, with data centers in, in the Kansas side and within the BPU's territory and potential additional, uh, renewable energy generation coming online, this site could also accommodate a battery energy storage facility, helping with transmission issues potentially in the local area, but also helping to integrate more renewables as you can kind of load shift those as appropriate and reduce the cost of bringing them online. Uh, this is the, kind of a summary of what I've discussed so far as far as the timeline. Again, working with the BPU since September two thousand and twenty-three, we have that team agreement, that option purchase agreement that the board's reviewed. Um, that's going in front of the UG here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, at which time we have a sixty-day period to do a confirmatory environmental diligence. And, and then we'd be able to get into the option period, we'd start paying the, uh, the option payment to the BPU as we market the site for data center use. Uh, allude to it already. Under the schedule, we'd be able to complete construct or start demolition in the third, fourth quarter of, uh, of this year. Uh, be able to complete all of the demolition by the end of two thousand and twenty-six. Um, because we're site planning the site the way we are, that shouldn't impede us to be able to bring the first building onsite as fast as possible, which would be in two thousand and twenty-seven. That's a key consideration for data centers as they're trying to bring these on quicker. The longer you put out a data center going online, the more alternatives that might emerge. And that value of having that onsite switch yard starts to depreciate over time. So we're really working, looking with BPU to be time of the essence and be able to make this a reality so that we can capture the value of that onsite switch station that differentiates it from other sites that data centers might be looking at. It's my first time I'll say it. As you are already aware, uh, summary of the proposed transaction. So it's for the sixty-five acres. And has a one-year term with a conditional one-year renewal about meeting certain marketing requirements with data center partners. The first year is a hundred thousand dollars, it's paid monthly. Second year goes up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The purchase price is ten point four million. That's based on the BPU appraisal. And then subtracted from that will be the remediation agreement costs that we enter in with the BPU prior to execution. That execution is required to execute the, the, or exercise the option. Um, and there's a floor on that. It doesn't go to the negative. Uh, and then we would then in turn perform all the environmental remediation and take on all the long-term liabilities associated with the site. Uh, Sean mentioned these already, but again, the key benefits we're seeing here, it takes those nineteen million plus the risk of additional unknowns off the BPU's plate. Uh, it provides immediate costs or the, even under the option period, provides payments to the BPU as we further explore this opportunity together. Um, and then when we realize the project, it provides that local hiring, workforce development as well as long-term revenue growth from an energy user and water user that is the data center. And that's the presentation we have for you today. So we're welcome for your feedback on this. If there's anything, uh, any questions you have for PT today. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, welcome to take any questions. I just wanted to reiterate that and this wouldn't be possible without a public-private partnership with BPU. I mean, uh, BPU has been a great partner in discussions, helped us plan through this. Um, the intention is that, um, the liabilities, uh, that, uh, Patrick mentioned will be at no, that required investment to BPU or the city of Kansas City. So we're planning to take all that on as part of the redevelopment. The option payments that, um, Patrick mentioned are our option, we're making those option payments, uh, um, which hopefully alleviate some of the, uh, carry costs that you have on the facilities. And so this project, um, I fully expect will be, you know, a winning project and, uh, you know, a, a, uh, structure that a, a lot of people will want to do in the future, including ourselves. And, um, and a way to, at the end of the day, benefit the community. Um, obviously we have investors, so our investors are looking forward to making their investment and a return on that with the data center players. But all of this is intended to be done at no cost to BPU. And then on the backend BPU, selling more energy and water to these customers. So I couldn't be more ecstatic about this project and the benefits of it. And just wanted to appreciate the work that Jeremy and his team has been, have been doing with us and helping to work through this project. So really appreciate that.
Well, thank you, Sean. I, you know, just kind of would back, back up and talk about the fact that we've been working on this um, here internally since two thousand and twenty-three. And so, um, obviously, as, as you see, some of the challenges that Sean and the team have shown and mentioned, um, you know, these things, they take a lot of time to do the right way. Takes a lot of, of time to identify all those liabilities. And, um, I think the, the sort of underlying positive theme for, for BPU and, and the city of Kansas City, Kansas is, uh, the liability transfer a- and the no cost, right? Those, those things that throughout this whole, you know, two-year process, uh, you know, Power Transitions and their team have not only shown the experience that, that they have in, in doing this type of work, but have been the only, the only partner that was, that was committed to, to the liability piece. So with that, I would turn it over to you all to ask any questions of the Power Transitions team. Brittany is here. I know you all have heard from Brittany. Um, and then Lee and Becky and Andrew, uh, all have had a significant portion of, of all the work that's gone on in this project. So we're, we're all here to, to answer any questions you can. Really try to, to, to make sure you understand, um, what, what we're going to deliver, what Power Transitions is going to try to deliver to, um, the commission over the next coming weeks.
I don't have any questions, but I'm just blown away by the, the, uh, presentation and very thankful to our team uh, for, um, bringing this to, uh, the board that we might observe it and, uh, be able to make an informed decision for it. Uh, thank you so much, uh, for, uh, considering, uh, the site that we had available, the site that uh, was not beneficial to us at the time, uh, and then be able to remediate any risk associated with it as well as, uh, the liability. That's, that's amazing. And so we, we appreciate that, uh, that offer of being on the table for us to, to, uh, to, uh, accept. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Further comment?
I, I echo a lot of, uh, board member Wakes comments. It's an exciting opportunity for our community. I think, um, that long-term financial impact and the effect that it may have on our ratepayers as a whole, uh, and our community as a whole is, is exciting. So appreciate, you know, we've, we've shared our, our thanks for, on the BPU staff side of all the work that's in the, you know, multiple years at this point that have brought it together. So just want to extend that to you all as well. We're excited to partner with you.
If you could recognize Vice President Mulvaney Henry, can you hear us?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, to the Power Transitions team, I apologize that I've not been able to be there in person tonight. Because if anybody on this board, uh, there is nobody more excited to welcome a data center into Kansas City, Kansas than, than I am. And, um, I so appreciate um, your business model, number one. Um, thank you guys for undertaking and gals for undertaking this effort. Um, I am, I don't want to say the most excited on this board because I think we're all equally excited about this potential opportunity. And I look forward to, um, assisting all of you in making this case, uh, with the unified government commissioners if necessary. Um, but I certainly hope they understand that, um, and I will say it across the street if I have to. If, if it's not built here, it will be built somewhere in the Midwest and there is no place like Kansas City, Kansas for this opportunity. So thank you all for coming tonight and giving this presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I too just like to thank you and for all the work that, uh, you've put in. I know there were several, uh, RFPs that were submitted and obviously yours was, you know, far and above, uh, the best proposal that was out there. So thank you for looking at Windy County and Kansas City, Kansas, uh, you know, for this opportunity. And I think we all know about, uh, you know, what a data center is, but you say that there's also going to be a clean energy innovation campus. What is, what's the innovation campus? What's?
Yeah, um, what we're referring to there, we have the ability to do anything from solar farms, wind farms and, and, uh, really any type of, uh, uh, thermal generation and, and storage. Again, Rob and I are really old, old people. We've done a lot of different projects. He doesn't, he's older than me.
I'm older.
Um, but so a lot of it depends upon the site. And for this site, um, we believe it has opportunities for, um, to add battery storage system to it. Um, we're proposing a smaller scale twenty megawatt per hour, but it can grow bigger. And the benefit of that is even though you may not have solar or wind at the site, it still serves to benefit um, that type of renewable generation. And so that's why we call it clean. Um, because it's really designed to enhance, um, you know, renewable energy that you don't know when the wind's going to blow and, you know, the sun only shines at certain times and to capture that clean energy and redistribute it during times where, when it's most needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank you for coming tonight and, um, for your presentation. I'd also like to echo, uh, board member, um, Mulvaney Henry's remarks. I'd be really happy to, on behalf of this board or as a community member, to, um, help with the, you, you know, the UG and our community, understanding this project and getting behind this project be, because I'm very in favor of it and I'd like to be the cheerleader for it.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Then I guess it's, uh, pretty unanimous how excited we are. I am board president, uh, now, um, but I've learned so much being on this board. I've been concerned for a long time about, uh, But I've learned so much being on this board. I've been concerned for a long time about Quandaro, about that dormant plant and its remediation. Certainly environmentally, it's been a big sticking point. I do want to know about the build out. I just always wanted to make sure that as we do, that we protect as much as of our existing base. And I think your plan points to that. From whatever infrastructure or building demands that we would have, that we kind of shield them. And I think that you've laid out how indeed that does or that will, both with the remediation and of course your costs to build that. Was concerned about protecting as we increase, you said going to one hundred and ninety two megawatt?
Megawatt data center. That's the the computing energy. It's actually a gross energy of about three hundred megawatts. So BPU will benefit from that three hundred megawatt sale to the to the center.
All right. And then we love our portfolio here now. So speaking to that, are we looking at much of that? You said clean. Would that be solar capacity, some of that inside of that with SVP?
At the end of the day, the source, Mr. President, of that energy is up to BPU. And they're going to source it. We're going to work closely with BPU on, you know, finding the best solutions that benefit BPU, also help make the project work. But in this data center market, you probably read a lot about artificial intelligence and the infrastructure needs for that. In this market, one of the great advantages of this site is readily built out. And that's what really makes it attractive to the data center players is that they can get that infrastructure data center online sooner than later, and the power will be available. And so to the extent that, you know, from renewable energy or a combination of thermal and renewable, it 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 all works.
Great. I don't know what our portfolio is. We're at forty eight percent now on.
It currently were forty eight percent renewable.
Yeah.
That's great. I'm pretty excited and proud about that. Again, I appreciate, as I guess we all do, your being here in the presentation. One other quick thing, I don't know if your team has taken, I know that the state of Kansas just did some data center hold harmless, and I can't even speak with the articulation. One would think I should. But I didn't know if you had an opportunity to factor how that might affect you. It's different tax incentives for data centers that Kansas just undertook. And I really should know, but I don't. And I don't know.
It's okay, Mr. President. We follow it very closely because it's an important issue. And Kansas was moving forward on a sales use tax related to data centers. I think it passed the House, right, or the Senate? And but they ran out of time, so we're looking forward for them to pick it back up in the next session. It sounds like there's a lot of, a lot of folks that are in favor of that. And it's an important issue because, you know, we're likely to to ourselves build what's called the powered shell and own that and lease it out to the the data center players hyperscalers. And they'll put in the racks and the computers, billions of dollars of computers for this size. And those computers have to be changed every three to five years. And so when they change it, every time they need to change, that's a that's just sales tax. And so they're really, they're concerned about that cost. And I think in neighboring Missouri, they they don't have that.
Right.
They have no tax. And so we watch that very closely because, you know, we want folks to we want the data centers to come here and make sure that, you know, they see it as attractive. So appreciate this, Fred.
No, we share that. We certainly hope. I didn't realize that that had not gone through.
I think it was just a matter of timing.
Well, optimistically, it'll be raised again, so it will be of a further benefit at some point to you at that time.
Yes, mention was made earlier about the commission and the board is obviously, as any member of the public, welcome to attend the standing committee and the full committing meetings on this. If you are going to attend, if you let us know if because of, as always, if there are four or more of you attending, we'll need to notice it as a possible BPU meeting. So.
Which standing committee?
Well, it's when you're on, so you don't need to let me know. I'm sorry. No.
ADNF.
Yep. So but if you, anyone besides Mr. Waits is attending, please let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. And again, Mr. Long, Mr. Bakandi and Mr. Brosnan. We're grateful, and I don't know if we have any other comments at this time, but grateful for the presentation. Thank you very much. Most informative.
Our our pleasure. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Mr. General Manager, thank you for the insight. So any further insight or information at this time to share with us?
I don't have any further information to share unless maybe, you know, I'm not sure if Brittany or or anybody has anything they'd like to add. But I don't have anything else to add at this time. And you all remember Brittany?
I had, hi, everyone. Thank you for having me again. I appreciate coming here as always, so it's nice to see everyone. Power Transitions, thank you for that discussion. It was great. I hope that it was helpful to y'all to flesh out not, I know you know the project and the terms of the document and the deal pieces that we've talked about. But I think to really see the tangible concept is really good. I think if you have any comments that can help the Power Transitions team better prepare for their upcoming meetings with the UG, that would be really, really helpful. So please don't be shy. If you have anything, we appreciate the cheerleading. You know this. I love I love a cheerleader for a thing. So if you were glad to have cheerleaders on this project, but if you have any feedback, I truly encourage you to give that if there's any pieces that you need to talk about separately. I'm happy to do that in executive session at an appropriate time. But did want to make sure that you felt very empowered to provide feedback that could be helpful as we keep going through the next steps of this process. Because we have worked really hard, y'all have worked really hard in vetting the project, making sure that you were comfortable with the protection of the community and the rate payers. So if you have any feedback, we'd love to hear it. Thank you all for having us. We really appreciate it. And Power Transitions, thanks to y'all too.
And if you think of anything over the next, you know, few days, evenings, weekend, feel free, just email them to me, copy, copy Chris, and we'll get it distributed to the team and and Sean's team to to think through and maybe tailor some of that messaging that you might think would be helpful for for the commission.
Thank you.
But not each other.
Thank you, Brittany. I would like to add, I understand I'm not a member of the finance of our finance committee, but I understand a good presentation was made and would like to at some point visit with Mr. Ferris, with Andrew, about the dovetailing or augment. I'm not a member of that standing committee, but I heard it was very well presented and well received today. So I and those of us who are on the board but not on that committee may like to get some of the highlights at the appropriate time regarding that because I understand it was most informative and helpful to the overall discussion that we're having.
Mr. President, you're welcome to come to our committee anytime that it's possible.
Absolutely. Well, to that, we have talked about when work sessions will be held and some of us were not sure that we were going to have a work session, this being the first time that this is not a regular meeting. And did not know that there would be some substantive business to undertake. However, very timely to have, especially with what's moving with PT, with Power Transitions, that it may have been a good time to do both for some of us who could that had didn't have other commitments elsewhere. So, thank you. Is there anything else to come before the board for this during this work session? Any of the members? Mr. Ash?
I do not.
Okay, all right. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Wait a second.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson, please. Roll call.
Roll call, Waits.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye. Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
I'll come back. Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion still carries.
Okay, great. Thank you. Being adjourned. Thank you.